Good evening and welcome to the Board of Commissioners preliminary budget meeting. Before beginning tonight, I wanted to express on behalf of the Board our condolences to the family of Mr. Shawn Hughes as well as the whole Lower Marion community. Mr. Hughes was the longtime, well-respected, beloved principal of Lower Marion High School, who tragically died in an auto accident on Saturday morning. His death is certainly a great loss for the whole of Lower Marion community. I ask you to join me in standing to honor him in a moment of silence.
Mr. President, I'd like to add, it's a loss for Haverford as well. He's a resident of the Ninth Ward. His family grew up on James Drive, his family's still there. And also say a prayer for his father, who died the night before Shawn died.
Mr. Berman, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner D'Amelio.
Here.
Commissioner Oliva is absent, but he apologizes for his absence. He did mention that he was working with Mrs. Cuthbertson to understand the budget and have any questions answered. Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Chief, could you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, under God, religiously, and just.
First item on the agenda is citizens input on agenda items only. Is there anyone in our massive crowd out there? There being no comments, we'll move on to our next item. Item number three, budget hearing and preliminary adoption of the year 2022 budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt as an ordinance a preliminary general fund sewer fund and capital fund budget, including all taxes, fees, service charges, and other revenue sources provided for, sorry, provided within all funds for 2022. I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Are there any comments?
Well, I think at this point, we'll ask our township manager to present the budget, at which point I think we then would call for a vote on and discuss any preliminary changes anyone may have in mind between this and the final ordinance.
Sounds good. Mr. Berman.
Very good. Well, thank you. On behalf of all the department heads and the entire Haverford Township staff, I'm pleased to present the proposed 22, 2022 operating budget and four-year capital improvement plan. As we continue to recover and emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic, budget preparation becomes more and more difficult. In fact, it seems to get more challenging each and every year. The economic effects of the COVID-19 pandemic are still unfolding, and many residents are still reeling from the county-wide reassessment. So as challenging as things have been, as always, our Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director Amy Cuthbertson led the budget process, and I admire her greatly for that process. Amy does all the heavy lifting and allows me to present a clear and hopefully concise budget for a very complicated operation. In addition, I would like to thank Commissioner Holmes for his valuable guidance as Chair of the Finance Committee. So the process begins each August when department heads receive general instructions to prepare their operating and capital budget requests for the following year. Finance Department prepares the initial proposal with each department's original expenditure requests and any revenue projections based on historic and current trends and the knowledge of local and, uh, local events and economic indicators. This year, of course, in the midst of a great deal of uncertainty. Township manager then reviews the initial budget proposal, identifies constraints, recommends adjustments where appropriate, and then the Finance Department develops this preliminary budget proposal. This evening, we'll review the budget proposal and ask the Board to consider any adjustments you may feel may be necessary, and will then ask the Board to adopt the preliminary budget. And after this meeting, the entire budget, as adopted, will be published on the Township's website for the community to review. A budget hearing takes place during the Commissioner's regular meeting in December. That's on the 13th at 7:00 PM. Between now and then, interested citizens may express their views on the budget by contacting their Commissioner, by emailing comments to theTownship@info@havtp.org, or by participating in the hearing on December 14th. At the conclusion of that budget hearing, we'll ask the Commissioners to adopt the final budget with any amendments that, again, the Board considers advisable. So for the benefit of anyone who has another commitment tonight, or just wants to tune out, we're going to start at the highest level. Recall that in 2021, the Board acknowledged the economic effects of both COVID-19 pandemic and the county-wide reassessment. Staff recommended, and the Board agreed, heading into 2022, I'm sorry, we did recommend no tax increase last year, and the Board agreed with that. Heading into 2022, we recognize many residents continue to struggle. And so, consistent with our approach in 2021, we will be recommending a 0% increase in township real estate taxes, and if approved, that rate will remain at 4.218 mils. With regard to trash, we take great pride in our comprehensive trash and recycling program. It's a robust program that includes twice-a-week trash collection, weekly recycling collection, weekly brush collection, biannual shredding events, electronic waste events, a new drop-off box for small electronics outside here in the parking lot, and other services. And so, as we adapt to changes within the solid waste and recycling industry, including changes to the pricing structure at the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority, we started by recommending an increase of $5 per year in the trash or recycling fee, and that takes the fee to $250 per residential unit. That's a 2% increase. However, as we'll discuss very shortly, we have received late information from the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority that may result in changes to that recommendation. Now, obviously, sanitary sewer is another essential public service. Water consumption figures from Aqua form the basis of our rate structure. Over the years, water consumption in the township has been going down, while, of course, industrial costs for sewage processing and treatment inevitably go up. As a result, the reduction in water consumption does not necessarily translate into dollar-for-dollar cost savings to the residents. And so, for that reason, we propose increasing the sewage rate from $4.55 per thousand gallons of water used to $4.65 per thousand gallons of water used. That's a 10% increase per thousand gallons. It represents an increase, on average, of $3 per year for residential sanitary sewer service. That's about 2.2%. So of course, the proposed budget represents our ongoing commitment to building and investing in a high-quality community as cost-effectively as possible. Our goal is to operate within the financial means of the Haverford Township community, while providing essential services and investing in necessary infrastructure to help meet the needs of the future. Suffice to say, Haverford Township employs a group of dedicated employees who give everything they have to serve our residents and businesses. Everyone, from administration and finance to parks and rec to code enforcement, to police, highway sanitation, sewer, there are so many good people who work here and continue to do their very best to keep Haverford Township a very special place to live and So for clarity and simplicity, it makes sense to look at our operating funds and capital funds separately. Our general and sewer funds combine to represent those operating expenditures that are necessary to maintain, maintain, and in some cases, enhance the services we provide. In that regard, we propose a total operating budget of $51.3 million for 2022, representing a decrease of 1.2 million from the 2021 budget. And again, that's pending late notification from the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority that I'll get into momentarily. So again, recall, during the 2021 budget process, we had planned to utilize $2.9 million of reserves to balance the general fund budget. Of that 2.9 million, only 1.5 million were unrestricted funds. The balance of 1.4 million were restricted for roadwork, which we implemented this year. Haverford Township's economic rebound in 2021 was better than expected, and the use of unrestricted funds became unnecessary. So as it turns out, we anticipate ending 2021 with a modest surplus. Because our proposed budget for 2022 reflects slow growth in a number of revenue streams, we anticipate a budget gap again this year. And again this year, we'll be recommending the use of a portion of that 2021 surplus to fund our anticipated 2022 budget gap. And so, when we talk about our operating funds, here are just some examples of the things that keep us up at night. One of the major things that we're dealing with right now is continuing to attract and retain skilled and talented employees in our collective bargaining environment. The competition for the workforce and for the workers is very, very tough. Inflation, obviously, we've all been hearing a lot about inflation, and we, as a township, have to balance our costs within the means of our residents. We're also experiencing reduced aid from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which affects both our pension aid and our liquid fuels and highway aid funding. We have continued low investment earnings in our governmental proprietary funds, and as we've been hearing an awful lot about, we are also facing supply chain issues, not just in terms of materials and equipment, like pipes that we may need for sanitary or stormwater projects, but also in terms of the amount of work we can engineer, design, bid, and manage. We were pressed from a project management perspective before the pandemic, and with funding from the 2020 CARES Act, the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act, the infrastructure bill, we and many other local governments and industries have a ton of work to accomplish with the same limited staffing resources that existed previously, along with the workforce issues I mentioned a moment ago. So as local governments grapple with the long-term financial impact of COVID-19, many have turned to the use of reserves to make up for revenue shortfalls and support ongoing activities. While reserves are a viable option for governments and designed to be used for situations like this, we are mindful that the use of reserves should support isolated events. It's a rare combination of circumstances in the world today, and even with the proposed use of reserves, our finances remain quite healthy. So what do we know? Not very much, but we are emerging from a public health crisis that has resulted in slow growth in many of our revenue streams. At the same time, inflation is at probably the highest level since the 1990s. The use of last year's surplus to balance the budget, if approved, would help stabilize our tax rate during this highly unusual time. We'd like to throw in a slide about our property tax structure here in Haverford Township. As you can see, the school district claims the lion's share of the taxes, and then the township, and then the county. So the 22, 2022 proposed general fund reserves. Obviously, real estate taxes continue to be the main source of township revenues, representing 26.4 million, more than half of our general fund revenues, in fact. Realty transfer taxes have also been strong. This is both a function of high volume and higher sales prices, a sign that Haverford Township is a desirable place to live and work. Still, we continue to utilize conservative estimates for our transfer tax revenue. We want to avoid relying on temporary, potentially unsustainable, revenue spikes. Business taxes are based on prior year receipts. In our 2021 budget, we prepared for a sharp drop in our business taxes as a direct result of COVID-19 in 2020. Fortunately, our business tax revenues, while still down, remained relatively solid in 2021, demonstrating the strength and resilience of our local business community. Barring any additional COVID spikes that would lead to economic restrictions, we are hopeful that 2021 represented the height of any business tax losses we would sustain because of the pandemic. With that in mind, we have restored our business tax revenue budget to pre-pandemic levels. Revenue from our Building and Codes Department continues its solid performance. A slight reduction is reflected in the proposed budget, largely due to the county's creation of a health department, and naturally, the township's loss of revenue for health-related inspections. Investment income remains stagnant, as we discussed a little bit earlier. Interest rates are low, and we have our investments for our government accounts, obviously, in very secure, safe, and liquid investments. Intergovernmental revenues pose an interesting challenge, as they can be very difficult to rely upon, especially in an unpredictable political climate. Absent advice to the contrary, we're assuming flat annual pension aid from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and we have already received notification that our highway aid will be about $20,000 lower in 2022, and that's compounded by a reduction of $70,000 in 2021, which obviously results in greater demands on our general fund reserves. With regard to departmental revenues, our Recreation Department faces a reinvigorated demand for programs. The proposed budget includes pre-pandemic levels of revenue for parks and recreation. Meanwhile, at the stadium, there's a high demand for organized ice rentals, figure skating and hockey leagues, but less demand for public skating and group rentals. This, too, is reflected in the proposed budget. While we consistently look for opportunities to increase efficiencies in how we accomplish our goals, we have included the projected impact of a new civilian collective bargaining agreement. Personnel costs, for example, wages, health benefits, pension benefits, workers' comp, payroll taxes, they represent about 62.2% of our budget. Of course, as I discussed earlier, this is not unexpected, because the people who work here are the core, at the core of every service we deliver. We've included no new full-time positions in the 2022 budget proposal, and any new hires would fill vacancies that have been created through natural attrition. For the fifth year in a row, our healthcare consortium secured a 0% increase in our health insurance premiums. The benefits of our participation in this consortium cannot be overstated, as we enter 2022 with a two-month payment holiday, saving the township about $800,000. Likewise, our self-insured prescription dental and vision benefit costs continue to outperform professional forecasts, and we are hopeful this trend will continue into 2022. Official valuation of our pension plans took place in 2021, as required, with favorable results. The township's annual minimum municipal obligation, that's the amount that the township must contribute to the pension plans, decreased from 5.8 million to 4.9 million. We continue to fund the pension plans, and we applied the planned 0.5% reduction in our assumed rate of return, taking us from 8.0 to 7.5%. Proposed budget includes a 3% increase in funding for the library and for each of the five volunteer fire companies. The proposed budget also includes an increase for the Shade Tree Commission to fund additional tree giveaway events in the coming year, which we hope will include non-residential properties as well. In the face of uncertainty regarding capital projects, the budget includes additional debt service to cover 25 million of new borrowing in 2022. So including that debt service on this anticipated borrowing, debt service costs represent about 10.7% of the general fund budget. So, the proposed increase of $5 for the trash and recycling fee would take us to $250 per residential unit. On November 5th, we received a letter from the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority informing us that the per-ton fee for trash would increase by 34.5% on January 1st, 2022. Obviously, this had not been factored into our original budget proposal, which was prepared and distributed to Commissioners before November 5th. So that's a concern that I'm sure the Board will want to discuss at the conclusion of So without going into a ton of detail, I am presenting on the screen the expenditures at the department level. And this is what will be published on the website and which has been distributed to the Board of Commissioners. So as I said, the proposed budget includes debt service costs associated with 25 million in new borrowing. So, taking us through a little bit of a timeline, back in April, the Library Board came here to the Board of Commissioners and asked the Board to consider a renovation and expansion of the existing library. And this is a very short story, because I know this has been going on for years. The Board of Commissioners approved a motion at that time, which directed staff to proceed with final design of the library expansion concept that had been requested. In May, the Board adopted a resolution outlining a number of projects for which the township intended to reimburse itself with the next bond issued, that 25 million that I talked about. And in that resolution, the Board included $16.1 million for the library's renovation project. However, certain zoning relief was required for the proposed expansion, building coverage, setbacks, things of that nature. Over the summer, the library appealed to the zoning hearing board for that certain relief, and in October, after a series of public hearings on that matter, the zoning hearing board denied the library's application for relief. And the library and the Board of Commissioners have both appealed the zoning hearing board's decision to the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. So as we wait conclusion of that proceeding, staff still included the originally planned debt service of 25 million dollars in the 2022 budget proposal. Long story. So wrapping up the general fund, Haverford Township heads into 2022 on solid financial ground, with a great deal of uncertainty. The global pandemic persists, unemployment is still high, and many Haverford Township landowners are still reeling from the excess, from the effects of the county-wide reassessment completed last year. Under the circumstances, we believe a tax increase could place a significant hardship on our residents and businesses, and result in some slowing to the economic recovery locally. Therefore, after a great deal of deep consideration, we propose, we propose no tax increase, and instead, we recommend utilizing $720,000 of unrestricted reserves to cover the budget gap that we're facing in 2022. We don't make this recommendation lightly. We recognize the importance of healthy reserves for long-term fiscal stability and for maintaining a solid position in the world of public finance. Rather than supporting spending outside our means, the use of reserves should support isolated events, and we feel very strongly that the rare combination of circumstances in the world today represents such an isolated event. Our recommendation, therefore, is to utilize unrestricted reserves, with the knowledge that even with the use of those reserves, our, our reserves would remain very healthy. Moving on to the sewer fund, sewer rent charged to all properties on public sewer represents the largest revenue generator of this fund, at 4.6 million. Sewer rents are based on water usage readings as supplied to us by Aqua, Pennsylvania. As discussed earlier, the proposed budget includes an increase of 10 cents per thousand gallons of water consumed, due to the combination of reduced water consumption and the increased industrial costs for collection, conveyance, and treatment. The reduction in water usage began prior to the anomaly of last year's quarantines, with a large number of people confined to home during the pandemic. Other revenue line items in the sewer fund, such as investment earnings and lateral permits, they supplement our major revenue source in the sewer fund. The ending fund balance, which is restricted to sanitary sewer purposes, remains healthy. Sewage processing fees paid to downstream authorities represent about 66% of our sewer fund expenditures. The budget includes processing fees that we pay to the Radnor-Haverford-Marple Sewer Authority, $1.6 million, and to Upper Darby Township, $1.5 million, with pass-through costs to Delcora and the City of Philadelphia systems. Township personnel costs represent just 16% of the operating budget in the sewer fund. For 2022, we do propose increasing the sewer rate from $4.55 per thousand gallons of water to $4.65 per thousand gallons. The 10-cent increase, or 2.2% per thousand gallons, represents an average increase of just $3 per year for sanitary sewer service. Now, in an ideal situation, only sewage would be in the pipes, but with aging infrastructure, one of the challenges we face is the inflow and infiltration of clear water into the sewer system. That could be groundwater, that could be stormwater, could be illegal connections from sump pumps, and that inflates the flows out of the township and inflates our costs at the downstream authorities. So future discussion might include a sewer rate study that would include an examination of our rate structure. So the proposed budget includes a number of projects in both our capital projects fund and in what we're calling our ARPA fund, ARPA being the American Rescue Plan Act, which we've discussed a number of times this year. So to refresh everyone's memory, on March 11th, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act, providing 350 billion in funding for state and local governments. The U.S. Treasury calculated Haverford Township's direct allocation at 19.8 million, and we received the first half of those funds in May of this year, and we expect the second half by the middle of next year. Regulations and guidance on the use of the funds took the form of an interim final rule, which was issued by the U.S. Treasury back in May. Based on those guidelines, township staff presented a proposed spending structure for the first 9.9 million, and that was during July. Following that meeting, the Board solicited public input via social media, constant contact emails, and on the Township's website. On August 2nd, the Board publicly reviewed the comments, received a date, and a week later, the Board adopted the proposed spending structure with the approval for individual projects consisted with our standard procurement processes and the applicable laws. The Board has already approved two back-to-business grant programs and the premium paid to volunteer firefighters. In addition, the Board has approved the use of ARPA funds for two stormwater repair projects, one in the Fourth Ward and the other in the Second Ward. We're actively working with the Haverford Partnership for Economic Development, now doing business as Discover Haverford, to develop a grant program in support of facade improvements for our businesses and business districts. Likewise, we're working with Panoni on Phase 3 of the Darby Road Streetscapes project. The proposed budget identifies a number of ARPA-eligible capital projects from stormwater repair to parks and recreation in virtually every ward in a township. Given the broad guidelines from the U.S. Treasury and the framework established by the Board of Commissioners for the first half of the ARPA money, we do expect a great deal of public input as each project comes before the Board for approval, and that is a good thing, because as emphasized, because public input was emphasized in the Treasury's Some of the noteworthy capital improvement projects are shown on the screen. We have to be careful to note that the proposed capital projects represent a long-term plan. The appearance of a project in the proposed budget does not indicate that it's received final approval. The Board of Commissioners must approve each project in accordance with relevant procurement laws. Frequently, the township defers planned projects to future years because of logistical, operational, or financial challenges. Obviously, COVID-19 created circumstances beyond our control and resulted in the delay or deferral of a number of capital projects. So the 2022 budget proposal includes many of these projects, as well as a number of projects in process that we discussed as part of the 2020 projects in process that we discussed as part of the 2021 budget. Like the rest of the country, our capital improvement program will face significant challenges. In addition to supply chain issues causing delays in the procurement of materials and equipment, we know that there's a backlog in engineering at Design Services. I can tell you, just about every firm that I talk to is looking for new engineers if anybody needs a job. So as you can see, Haverford Township has an aggressive capital program, and we must remain mindful that logistics, staffing limitations, and other unforeseen conditions may add additional time to some of these projects. So the key highlights or lowlights, 0% real estate tax increase is proposed. A $5 trash and recycling fee increase is proposed, subject to further discussion. A 10-cent per 1,000 gallon sewer rent increase, $3 on average per property, is proposed. We're including a 3.5% wage increase for civilians, subject to approval of the Commissioners in the collective bargaining agreement, which will be presented in December, and a 2.75% contractual increase for the uniformed personnel. We assume $25 million in new borrowing for capital projects. And I'm sure you have a lot of questions. So again, I want to thank Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director Amy Cuthbertson for pulling this whole thing together, and by the way, assisting with answering questions this evening. Thank you.
Holmes.
Let me thank Township Manager Mr. Berman and Assistant Township Manager Ms. Cuthbertson for an outstanding job on this budget and presentation. Do have a couple of questions if I could start things off. Obviously, anybody who has any questions should feel free to ask them. I could ask about sewer use, the sewer fee, Mr. Berman. As I understand, we've had an overall reduction in water usage in the township, but no reduction at all in the costs associated with our township's use of the sewer facilities, so we need to raise more revenue with less water. Is that what... Did I understand that correctly?
That is a accurate description, yes.
Is there any... I'm not asking for you to give me engineering advice, but is it... Are all the costs with our sewer authority fixed, or is there any increase or decrease in cost that rises proportionally or in some way directly with the increase or decrease in water consumption?
So they're metered largely where the water leaves the township, and so our water consumption is one part of that equation. The inflow and infiltration of clear water into the system is another part of that equation. And we're just one part of several larger systems, so it's all relative. If the costs go up at downstream authorities having jurisdiction, then they have to distribute those costs to all the participating municipalities. And if everybody's water goes down or up, the actual costs are going to stay virtually the same because they'll change a proportion of both the cost and to our relative share of water that were flowing into those systems.
It used to be we couldn't have a meeting without somebody getting up and talking about infiltration. Sorry, what was the other word?
Inflow and infiltration.
Infiltration. And I know that we've undertaken some infrastructure repairs to work on that, as well as we've also undertaken kind of a house-by-house each time we inspect a home for a certificate of occupancy or unlawful sump pump hookups directly into the sanitary inline. Is that having a positive effect on our costs for the sewer?
So it certainly would have a positive effect if every other municipality's flows were remaining the same or going up. But if all the other municipalities that flow into that system are doing inflow and infiltration reduction at the same rate, then our share of the costs are not going to change a great deal. So it's more about everybody should do the right thing to keep the clear water out of the system. Yes, there would be savings over time, but it would be mitigated by the fact that other municipalities are also reducing their water consumption, or their flows, to be more accurate.
And you said we are going for a 10... It's a 10-cent increase from $4.55 to $4.65, is that right?
That's what I said, yes.
Anticipate that's about $3 a year or so. I mean, a typical homeowner is about 30,000 gallons of water use.
Amy, can you help me with that one?
I wouldn't know exactly the usage, but a typical sewer bill is about $265, $285 per year.
Typical, like that's our median bill? No? Or average? Mr. Berman, with regard to trash, when we consider our total trash costs, we take into account the purchase of equipment, we take into account full-time Public Works employees and everything. What's the percentage of our total trash cost that the tipping fee represents, off the top of your head?
Amy, can you help me out with that one? The percentage?
I really... I apologize, I did not hear the question.
The percentage of the tipping fee to our total sanitation costs?
It's a large percent. Probably tipping fee is about $980,000 over the budget for the sewer or the sanitary operation, which I forget right off the top of my head what it was, but give me a second, I can pull it up. The total sanitation department is 5.2, and of which tipping fees were at about... I'm probably going to estimate it now at about $1,001,000.
And they were at about 900?
Last year, they were 954, the $1,001,000. Remember, this whole budget was prefaced on assumptions we knew before 1031, which did not include the county's increase. So this was just natural increases that we thought we might see, maybe a dollar a ton. We budgeted $1,001,000 for this year, $1,001,000 out of...
So we've got, what, 17,000 tax-paying households here? So 200 and... What's our number right now, 2?
Slightly under the amount that actually do trash because condos and things like that don't.
What is the... What's going to be the new... What's going to be the gap as a consequence of $5 increase but this $20 per ton increase?
The $20 per ton would bring us... We have to find $438,000.
And?
If you pass it on as a fee increase, it would probably be around $20 to $30 per
Berman, or Ms. Cuthbertson, with regard to the reserves that we've set aside for this year, I think I saw up there on the chart approximately $780,000, is that right?
The budget includes a $720,000 use of prior-year surplus.
Okay. And that... Those reserves reflect less than the amount of the reserves we committed last year but did not have to spend in 2021, is that correct?
Yes.
And Ms. Cuthbertson, as I understand, the most recent analysis of our bond rating was performed by Moody's and done based upon our budgeted numbers, including the amount of last year's... The amount of reserves that we committed to 2021's budget?
They did. Now, during that process, which I know you're familiar with, but during the rating process, they do ask for an update of how we see 2021 evolving as at the time we were rated, which I believe was in January-June, or actually rating this year. So we did at that point have a better idea that we might not need all the reserves that we had planned on using when we did the 2021 budget. We had seen that the realty transfer was still strong. We saw the real estate taxes were coming in at a good clip. We saw the business taxes were coming in at a good clip. So they did ask how we foresaw 2021, and I did say I thought we were going to come up with a surplus. The surplus actually for 2021 is larger than I thought it was going to be even back in May. So I think to get to your question, not to jump to conclusions, but if we were to use some of the fund balance to rectify this trash situation, we still wouldn't be using as much of a surplus that we're going to have this year, plus we didn't use last year.
So is it your opinion, based on your dealings with Moody's and based on what you know what they looked at, and I'm not asking you to predict their rating, but I just want to know your opinion, do you believe that the use of the reserves this year to fill in the budget gap would have any detrimental effect on our bond rating for borrowings in '22?
I don't, because I think we're still going to be hovering around high 40s, low 50% as far as percentage of budgeted revenues as reserves. Extremely healthy.
Actually, our revenues this year are down $1,500,000. Anticipated revenues are down $1,000,000 or $1,500,000 from anticipated revenues in '40.
And that's because, if you remember, in the 2021 budget, we had planned to bring in so much in from fund balance, and we don't have to do that this year. To the extent that we were going to, we thought we would in '21.
My point being that the measure of the strength of our reserves is not based on an absolute value, but it's based on the percentage of our revenues. So if our revenues go down in 2022 and our reserves stay about the same, it will actually reflect a qualitative increase in our reserves and therefore a qualitative increase in our financial strength, is that right?
And that fund balance is very important to us because many other communities, they have, you know, all across the country, they have more buildings to do, more expansions to do. We are pretty much built out, so our biggest claim to fame with Moody's is our financial strength and management. So we want to keep those strong. I think we will, even if the Board should decide to utilize fund balance for this trash situation. That doesn't correct it going forward, though, so there might want to be a plan going forward as to what we may or may not do in 2022. Otherwise, we'll have the same problem next year.
Do we have any idea as to whether or not there may be a political remedy for this, for the trash situation? Obviously, this is a big surprise at the end of this year. Does the county council make this decision, or is this strictly within the purview of the County Waste Authority?
The County Waste Authority, I believe, is a separate structure, but it is... It does have a presence on their board from county council, so I believe they're sort of a component unit of county council.
Is it your recommendation that we cover the entire increase in the trash fee that we became aware of on November 5th through a rate increase, or do you think we can do it through an additional rate increase? Do you think we can do it through a combination of some additional rate increase and some additional commitment of reserves?
If we can do it through a combination, as I said, my bigger concern is if there's not going to be a call to action in the interim as to ways to identify, ways to reduce the trash stream. We're just going to have this conversation again next year. I think it's an opportunity, if it's the will of the Board, to look into ways to reduce trash, ways to increase recycling, anything to get it out of the trash stream.
Yeah, I would just add, Commissioner Holmes, I mean, my concern with the 0% tax increase is one thing, but when we're talking about the trash fees, there's a high likelihood that these trash fees will probably go up again next year. I mean, the whole market, everything we've heard from our EAC, from the county, from everywhere, is that trash fees, recycling fees are all going up. So I think our 0% tax increase is great and is the right move, and Amy can outline and prepare budgets and predict reasonable expenses moving forward. But I think pretending like the trash fee isn't going to just go up next year, and then we're going to be faced with the same situation, only larger, is a mistake. So I think as far as it goes with the trash, we have to deal with that head-on right now.
Could we... Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Ms. Cuthbertson, what was the last increase from the County Solid Waste Authority that took us to 58?
That was a big increase as well, in the 30s, I want to say.
How long ago was that?
It was not that long ago.
I think that was two years ago.
Maybe two or three years.
I always think it was two.
We have been taking advantage of a discount. They were allowing a $5 per ton discount to municipalities who would, instead of using the local transfer station, would go to the Chester, directly to Covanta. And Dan and his team have been doing that, so that has saved us some money this year. But that discount is only available to the county, which I believe coincides with the county's or Solid Waste Authority's current contract with Covanta. They're not able to say if they can continue that, and that's stated in their letter as We tried to keep it down as much as possible this year, too, but not even going to have that discount guaranteed.
Just as a basic comparison, what do we pay for recycling per ton?
Right now, it's low. It's in the 20s. And just as a... Give it a sense, when we were going through this exercise last year, we were in the 80s.
Really?
Yeah. Huge swing in that area.
The market has increased for recycling, or we just... Is there less of it?
No, I think the market's increased. That's a cyclical thing as well. We saw how quickly it jumped up. We were... At one point, if you remember, we were getting monies from recycling. They would give us a check.
I mean, it's not a basis for us to make budgetary decisions, but I do think in 2022, one thing we should consider as a township is whether we partner up with any private entity or whether we consider investing in our own composting program. I know that there has been an explosion in private composting programs. That can... I mean, you know, with how much now that we put into single-stream recycling, it seems like the only thing going into our trash now is, you know, is food products that can't go into the recycling. And if we can... If we could get ahead at the start of the composting cycle, it would be great if we could do that. And we could... We're not going to decrease that fee, but we may significantly decrease the amount we actually do. That's not a reason not to budget for it, but it is something for us to think about in '22 that will have a direct effect on our expenses as a township if we can encourage or even participate in township-wide composting program.
I don't know if Dave already mentioned it, but we did incorporate... We realized the popularity of the e-waste events. We are going to have at least two formal e-waste events next year. That's already been factored into the budget. But that gets those larger, especially televisions that can't be done with or recycled properly out of the trash stream and recycled properly. So I just wasn't sure if that was mentioned, but we will be doing that next year.
And so talking about energy costs and trash and recycling, I had a question for you about the... About the position that you put in as a potential sustainability coordinator? And since I'm just walking into this, what are our plans for how we might consolidate some of these ideas that we're talking about around trash and recycling and composting, which I'm also in support of? And do we have sort of a consolidated approach to that as a township?
So the Climate Action Plan was just adopted, and the note, which may have been a little bit misleading, indicated that a sustainability officer had been requested. And as I said during my presentation, we don't have any new positions in this year's budget. That position would ideally be suited for that type of role that you're talking about.
So if... I understand the concerns with the budget, but if this is something that we know is coming down the pike and we have the ability to try to be more efficient in these efforts, I would just throw out that that could be a useful way to address it.
Composting, just be careful, because we tried this before. If you're talking about leaf...
And if you're talking about leaf composting or just having residents compost?
So, Mr. D'Amelio, I'm specifically talking about, I mean, right now, there's, there are, there are private entities that, that collect composting here in the township from residents, and then, and then later, I don't know, six months from now, a year from now, the product of that composting will be, will be delivered to them. It's just, it's, it's one of yet another, you know, way to reduce the amount we put into the waste stream. I, I'm certainly aware of, and I think we're all aware of, the, the lack of success of what happened over in the, in the, I guess it was, I guess it was your ward, right?
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up. But it wasn't only my ward, it, it affected other wards, because of the way the wind blew.
Yeah, so that's not at all what I'm trying.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm trying to raise, no, there are, there are now private entities that are doing this, and the question is whether or not the township, and it's not a question for tonight, and I.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going down that path again.
Now, nobody's talking about, nobody's talking about a 200-foot pile of smelly compost in, in either of your wards, or the sixth ward, I can assure you of that. And, and, and again, I think perhaps I've taken us down a road here that's not necessary tonight. This is our preliminary budget, and it is going to be my recommendation that we adopt this preliminary budget as it is written, but with the understanding that tonight, and between now and our meeting in December, any changes that we are going to, you know, that we're going to propose and put in that night are things we should consider and talk about, and obviously invite public input. But we know going into tonight, which isn't always what happens, that there is a shock to our system of this news from Delaware County that didn't come till November 5th. So I thought at least that topic was something worth, you know, examining more closely while we were all here today.
If I may, well, just on the issue of composting, not the leaf composting, but at Commissioner Quinn's request, and I believe it's the EAC, they had, the EAC had put together some, an idea of a proposal to deal with composting, because our ordinance right now is just out of date and kind of not, not useful. I redrafted the ordinance so that it would meet current standards, be consistent with PADD, DEP, and other communities. I've sent the draft to Mr. Berman just recently, so I don't know that he's even had a chance to look at it, it's fairly extensive, but it would allow for onsite composting of certain waste with significant restrictions that are set forth under, you know, Pennsylvania environmental procedures, et cetera. So it's a talking point, but it hasn't made its way here yet. But I, it, it took a lot of work to get it into something we could use.
I have no more questions of our township manager or assistant township manager on the budget.
Can I ask a question for Amy or Dave? And just, and just looking at this, and I know Brian's not here tonight. In the proposed capital projects, it looks like there's, there's somewhere around $65,000 or $67,000 that Parks and Recreation is spending based on monies that are already on hand. Am I to assume then that the, that the amount of money that we gave two years ago in the 2.5, that, that's been spent? And if there's any left, where, where, where is that going?
The vast majority of it has been spent. Some of those projects had a grant component to it, so when we got the grant monies, I put that in a separate account, so it's earmarked to use for park projects, so that's what I mean by cash on hand. But the, the bulk of the 2.5 has been spent.
Okay, so in, when we were having those discussions, the concept was that we would do 2.5, and then there'd be another round of borrowing for an additional 2.5. I assume Parks and Rec still has a list of projects that they'd be willing to do. Is that 2.5, is that intended to be part of the 2022 borrowing, or is that something for?
No, actually, we are taking the approach to use ARPA monies. We feel that it's well within the purview of the purpose of ARPA. These park projects that the Park and Rec Department has proposed, they will get people outside, they will keep them outside to help to lead and grow in healthy lifestyles, so we feel they will all be valid to use ARPA monies for. So we are catching a break there with the ARPA monies, we won't have to borrow 2.5, we can just use ARPA for that and free up 2.5 for other needs of the township.
We report to the board at any time our, our meeting with Congresswoman Scanlon's office and Congressmember Scanlon herself to talk about ARPA and, and what, what Ms. Cuthbertson just alluded to, which is the confidence we have that these are all within the program.
We have not reported on that meeting yet.
We had a very productive meeting, it was a very positive meeting about, about the guidelines from Treasury and, you know, the, what other, what other municipalities are doing, and, you know, some guidance on, on where we can go with, with certain programs under ARPA. So I think we have more confidence now than, than we might have had at the start of this as to what township projects are appropriately within ARPA and can save us the borrowing that Ms. Cuthbertson just referenced.
Any other commissioners?
Is the recommendation of the staff to, this $15 increase, are we going to absorb that in the township budget, are we adding, increasing the tech, the trash fee or not? I wasn't clear on that. Is there a recommendation from the staff on what we're doing? Are we splitting it, like, $750 increase, or?
My comment was that if we were going to absorb it, I think we need a long-term plan as to how we're going to address it. So if we were going to absorb it as a one-year trial to see if some real call to action can come to, to get this trash stream down, which I, I don't know if that's possible or not, but absent of that, I don't know if the best move is to absorb it, like I said, unless we're going to.
I don't either, I think that's a bad precedent to set, and it would make sense to.
I think, I, I just looked at it, just the, it's the sheer consumption of what is going into our trash. Just five years ago, it was about 16,000 tons, and this year, we're on pace for over 18. And last year was even higher at 19, but we all know, you know, we were all cleaning out in COVID, so that's understandable, but this year, we're still on pace to, to exceed 18,000 tons, considerably higher than where we were just five years ago.
But that absorption becomes even bigger, so I think, I think.
Unless there's a real call to action to change something about trash collection.
And to cover that, the fee would be about $30 increase?
Yeah, I would round it out for this discussion to 30. If that's the way the board wants to go, we'll nail that number down.
Okay.
So it's currently proposed at 5, and the recommendation is that the increase not be 5, but be 30?
30 to 35, we'd have to nail that number down. The $5, we felt we needed, if you remember, I know, you, you know, Commissioner Holmes, we try and stay between 80 and 85 of the cost of sanitation to be absorbed through the fees. So that $5 was necessary, we also added in another e-waste event, so that added to some costs. But if we're going to totally absorb the increase from Delaware County Solid Waste, then we're probably going to be, that would be an extra 30, so we might be in the 32 to 35 range.
But as a minimum, wouldn't it make sense to, to absorb it at the 80 to 85% rate that we continuously do?
And if that's the will of the board, that's what I said, we'll have to nail that down, but if we could just have the guidance as to whether it would be an increase or absorption.
Well, I, I moved this budget, so I guess I have the ability to make an amendment to it at this point. We could, we could, we could add a trash fee. Currently says, the first reading of ordinance P-22, 2021, fixing the township of Havreford trash fee at $250 per year, that reflected a $5 increase, right?
Well, you haven't read number 6, you've only read number 3, and the trash fee is number 6.
But once you get to that, you can.
Yeah, but the preliminary budget takes, preliminary budget in here takes into account the revenues that we are going to get from the trash fee. So I would.
We have to, we have to enact that by ordinance, separate ordinance.
I, I just. I was gonna, okay, all right, fine, I mean, that makes perfect sense. I was going to recommend a, a, a number, but we don't have to get to that till we get to 6, so I guess what I would do is ask the township manager to call a vote for the preliminary adoption of the year 2022 budget.
What do you mean, there was a motion in second?
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, I don't think you need to do anything else. If there are no further questions, Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Commissioner D'Amelio. Yes. Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Siegel.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Item number 5, ordinance number P-21, 2021, the sewer rental charge, first reading.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
President, I, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance P-21-2021, fixing the annual sewer rental or charge for each property connected to the sewer to $4.65 per 1,000 gallons of water consumed or used by said property. That 465 represents a 10 cent increase from 2021.
Second.
Second, and my Commissioner Quinn, there any discussion? There being none, Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Commissioner D'Amelio.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Siegel.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Item number 6, ordinance number P-22, 2021, trash fee, first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
As I move, we adopt the first reading of ordinance P-22-2021, fixing the township of Havreford trash fee at $250 per year.
Second.
Second, and my Commissioner Quinn.
Mr. President. I would like to amend ordinance P-22 for our consideration and fix the township of Havreford trash fee at $275 per year. That would be a $30 increase from last year, be 25 more dollars from what, from what was proposed at approximately 16,000 houses, that's $320,000 of increased, it's $320,000 of increased revenue, based on the notion of a $400,000 fee increase, that's approximately 80%. I know we've been hovering between 80 and 85%, I think 275 is a fair number. And so I would ask, I would, I, I amend my ordinance P-22 and ask if the person who seconded it is willing to accept that amendment.
Sure.
There any discussion? There being none, Mr. Berman, can you take the roll on the amended ordinance?
Commissioner D'Amelio.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Siegel.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
There any further discussion this evening?
If I could, once again, thank our, our professionals for their extraordinary effort, as well as all the department heads who, you know, provided this information in a timely manner to our assistant township manager and our township manager. I would also ask if we could, as quickly as possible, receive new revenue numbers based upon the trash fee change that we've adopted tonight, and then encourage any commissioners who have any additional changes to the budget to share those with township manager and township assistant township manager so that we are prepared to discuss them at our December meeting.
Thank you. There's no further business, if there's a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
They're adjourned.